I'd like to call this meeting to order. Clark, please.
Adequate notice of this meeting was provided in accordance with Chapter 231 Public Law 1975.
Take a moment of sauna meditation. Thank God, our Creator, that we are here and that we're healthy, because not everybody is at this time of the year, so please remember that. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance led by Deputy Director Marcia.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
God bless America. Okay, we have rule call.
Commissioner Ostino.
Here.
Commissioner Albrecht.
Here.
Commissioner Romero.
Here.
Commissioner Loes.
Present.
Commissioner Taylor.
Present.
Deputy Director Marchand.
Here.
Director Sorrow.
Here.
Do I have a motion and second to open public comment?
So moved.
Second.
On favor.
Aye. Anyone from the public that wishes to address their board on any issue, you may step up, give your name and your location.
Sandy Acevedo, Upper Deerfield Township. My question is, was the decision to remove the second public comment period on the agenda a group decision taken by possibly a vote from the entire board, or was it a decision that the director made all on his own? Thank you.
Great questions. Good evening. I'm Nancy Richaway from Upper Deerfield and Fairfield Townships. At the last meeting, it was talked about with the parks and how important it is for people to get out in nature and enjoy the sunshine and the woods and all that good stuff. And you might even start charging money to tenure parks. That's why you're going for these park systems all over the county. And I'd like to know how come a private citizen that spends their own money to buy land and make a park, that the county's allowed to destroy it? Got it? Another question is, a rumor is out there that the shared service agreement with Gloucester, Salem, and Compton County for the regional jail that was supposed to be built in Salem County has been stopped, and that we've already spent $2 million on it. Can you clarify that? Thank you.
Hi, my name's Joanne Kowalski. I'm from Deerfield Township. I'm here on behalf of 4H Youth Development. I've been a volunteer co-leader with them for over 12 years, and I'm also the president of the Cumberland County Fair Association, which we work closely with the 4H during fair. So I know a lot about that with them as far as how they work with stuff. So in 2022, the county moved the planning department to the 4H building to help support 4H because there was an issue with numbers going down, and they were concerned about some stuff. Currently, or at least when I started, there had three assistant program positions, and currently there's one person left from people either retiring or leaving because of having young children. I did know that out of the two that are open, there is one that was approved to be posted, so that'll bring us back up to two. But the three people had individual responsibilities within 4H. One was in charge of cloverbud, which is kindergarten through third grade. And what they do is get them introduced to all the programs that we have, and it's not just regarding animals. It's any kind of item or project that you want to do or have it, not have it, like a, an interest, we will start a club for you. The cloverbuds start in their own program for a non-competitive activity that they can learn how to work with other kids and see what's out there that they would like. So that was one person that was just assigned those positions. There was a school outreach person who would go to schools and after-school programs and talk with 4H youth to maybe join some clubs and see what's out there, especially with this county being so low on income with a lot of people. 4H provides a lot of stuff for them to do that's not free. That is free. You don't have to join with money or anything, and a lot of kids actually fundraise for a lot of stuff they have to do. And then the third person was in animal and science. So right now, we have just the animal and science person. So with the weather starting to get nice, a lot of stuff we do is outside. So a lot of the programs that we do, especially at the fairgrounds, might not happen if we don't have all three. So now that we have the second one listed, I would like to propose that there was an effort put in for the third spot. 4H programs hugely help our youth and become competent, caring, and contribute citizens. So I don't know how much you guys all know about the 4H program, so De'Ann, who's the one left, wrote up this program booklet that I will have for you guys if you want. It also lists all the clubs that we currently have, so it gives you a good idea about how much the kids actually do. They learn a lot, especially the ones in livestock, because at the end of the year at fair, they do a livestock auction, so they need to learn how to take care of the animals, how to keep track of what they're spending to see if, when they go to auction, if they're actually producing a profit, how to take care of the animals properly. There's a lot of stuff with horses as far as vaccines and stuff. So I would just like to really emphasize that it would be nice to have all three people back in so that we can work with the youth the way that they should. There's a lot of opportunity for them to really learn a lot. We also do a lot of community service. They just recently, for Valentine's Day, wrote up 1,400 cards and brought them to the senior centers and veterans places. And they clean up streets and stuff like that, so if you would like, I would hand them out. Just to get it on your attention, because it would be nice to have them staffed fully. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Cheryl Golden. I'm the Director of the Cumberland County Division Social Services, and I'm here tonight just to provide you with some information about an extensive criminal operation that's affecting recipients of public assistance programs. For the last few years, the Supplemental Nutrition Assistance Program, otherwise known as SNAP, has been a target of skimming operations. So funds on recipient benefits cards that are used to purchase food for our SNAP households are being stolen, or what is referred to as skimmed. And this has happened in two ways. The first is at point-of-sale machines at a business location where individuals are purchasing food, and the second is if they're doing online grocery purchases. It's happening all over the country, and it has happened right here in Cumberland County. So SNAP benefits are loaded on a benefit card that looks like this, like a credit card, between the first and fifth day of the month, right around midday. Within minutes of these funds being available on the card, the entire amount on the card is being skimmed, and the card is wiped out. All the SNAP dollars for the entire month are gone. Up until the end of 2024, victims of skimming could be provided with replacement benefits after reporting the incident to our office and providing required documentation. The replacement of benefits was a federal decision. SNAP dollars that go to residents are 100% federally funded. Congress did not include replacement benefits in the last continuing resolution, so anyone that has had benefits stolen after December 21st, 2024, will not be getting those funds back. They will not receive an additional SNAP allotment until the following month's benefits are provided. This month, Cumberland County has been hit hard. As of today, we have 251 households that have reported their March benefits stolen. These families will not have SNAP funds to purchase food until April. There's nothing the state of New Jersey can do, as the feds have halted the replacement of these benefits. This is deeply concerning to me, as I just can't imagine, you know, what some of these families are going through not being able to purchase food. So in an effort to do something for our affected residents, I reached out to Jill Lombardo at Rural Development to see if the Division of Social Services could work with their food distribution center to assist these families. So we met this morning, and we've come up with a plan to have special food distributions for the 251 households that lost their benefits. So on Monday and Tuesday of next week, in the three major municipalities, one of the existing food pantries is going to have designated time slots from 4:00 to 6:00 p.m., because a lot of our families are working, and they will be providing the food for these households with a special distribution. The distribution will include meat, dairy, produce, other perishable and non-perishable food items that they really are using these SNAP benefits to purchase. So at the Division of Social Services, we are preparing and sending out special vouchers to these individuals. We're reaching out to them to let them know how and where to get this food. We hope and pray that it is successful, and it is going to provide a stopgap until their April benefits are received. So I'm speaking to you tonight, you know, for three reasons. One is just to make you aware of the situation, what's happening and the hardship that these crimes are creating for our residents. Second is to possibly ask for your assistance in informing our congressional leaders about the crimes and about our need, not only for replacement benefits, but for long-term solutions to stopping these things from happening. And the third reason is to let you know that even though the state and federal governments cannot provide relief at this time, we are doing what we can to help Cumberland County residents in need. I want to publicly thank Rural Development for their cooperation and their quick action. This is county government working, you know, at its best in partnering with our nonprofit agencies to work together and to solve problems and to meet the needs of the community. So I want to thank you for your time and for your support.
Cheryl, can I ask you a question?
Sure.
What is the required documentation that people have to provide?
So they have to, you know, they give us a, a written statement that their benefits have been lost. They give us, you know, usually get their case number and that information, then we do some queries, and we are able to determine if it was actually skimmed, you know, in the manner that they're reporting.
Okay, so a personal statement that they have to sign?
Yes, yeah, yeah.
And it's mostly being, or people are stealing the cards at point-of-sale locations?
Mostly, yes. So they put a device in the point-of-sale, and you put your card in, use the PIN, and it just takes all of that information. So right now, the only thing that we can do is tell people after they use their card to re-pin it. So the next time they use it, it would have a different PIN. The state is working on some other technology issues to help, like to have an app where you can lock and unlock, like we can all do with a credit card.
Right.
Right? That is not available yet. It should be coming soon. They're also working on a chip card, which is not available yet, but that should also help. So there are some things in the future that we hope will mitigate some of this, but right now, those things aren't in place.
Okay, thank you.
Just want to make a comment. I heard about this today, and I really, it's, you told me about what was happening. This is actually, you say it's county government working, but it's DAS and the Rural Development. They pulled this together to be, these people are not going to have any food for a month, at least not have the food they normally have because of this. You know, it's pretty special you guys did it and worked it out, and hopefully it goes fine, and so it's actually you and your staff and people, Jill Lombardo and her staff getting together to do this. It's good, and hopefully people hear this, that they're going to come up and get together. Just a question about the skimming. Is, you said there's local point-of-sale places. Is, is there certain, because prosecutors approve, is there certain stores you see this happen, or is it all over? Because that was.
So sometimes, yes. So our job at the local level, we consider all of this fraud, right? So we investigate individual clients that may be suspected of fraud. The state and federal government, they investigate the stores, the retailers, vendors, and things like that. I know that the FBI is working on these cases, because as I said, it is all over the country. You know, it's definitely something we can share with the prosecutor's office, but I do know that there are state and federal law enforcement agencies that are already working on these things.
Now, this is going to be a reoccurring monthly problem?
So it is in different places. So we got hit hard last time, I believe it was either in July and August, and now again in March. So it's, and then they'll hit another county hard the following month. I mean, it's a huge criminal operation, and it doesn't hit us every month. In some months, it might be two or three, but then we just get hit real hard with hundreds of people this happening to.
But Rural Development, I can't keep picking up the tab.
So they're a part of a big, they have a federal, I believe it's federally funded from USDA, it's a food distribution center, and they have an enormous operation of food distribution.
Cheryl, if I may say, also too, if you're hearing from where these point-of-sale machines are at, and somebody can specifically say where they were at, it should be reported to Consumer Affairs here in Cumberland.
Oh, okay, okay.
And they can go out and take a look at those machines, and then I know that they work hand-in-hand with the local jurisdictions and the prosecutor's office for a couple criminal cases in the past.
Yeah, I believe Consumer Affairs has a specific device that gets attached to it and can determine if it's a skim.
If it's, oh, okay. Oh, good to know.
So we purchased them before for gas stations, when we experienced this with skimming at gas stations, but I'd be interested to know if, like, out of the 251, if there were common points of sale where this is occurring?
We do, we can dive into that. Like I said, this has just happened the past couple days, so right now, we're trying to get the help to the individuals, but yes, that will come. We will investigate, were they all at the same place? Is it, is it one store? Because sometimes it is, and also, you know, we like to then also look at the dollar amount, how much money has actually been taken? So I will have more information in the future, but like I said, right now.
Have you seen any of those similarities over the boards that you took?
We saw a lot of similarities this summer, yes. Almost all of it was of one store. And there, I would be willing to bet that there is a similarity this time because the majority of these cases are people that reside in Bridgeton this time.
You, you see that there are resources that are available?
No, that's great.
That teams that can work together, like you guys work together, they can work together and figure it out, so hopefully we can minimize this next time it comes around, so.
Great, thank you.
Thank you, Cheryl. Is there anyone else from the public, like, to address the board?
Hi, Melissa Niles, Department Head for Human Services. So since you said Bridgeton are most of the affected families, you probably already know this, but at the recovery center, we participate in the Wawa Harvest Program, so you can send the families there. Wawa donates to us their breakfast sandwiches and et cetera. You know, the hot items that they have at the counter, we have those every day, and I mean, it's not much, but it's something, especially when I hear that we already know how Bridgeton is in need, so, thank you.
Anyone else? If not, motion to close?
Motion to close.
Second.
On favor?
Aye. Real quick, I just wanted everybody to know that the director is the one that set the agenda, so it is the director, meaning me, who made the decision. Clear that one. The other question about the agreement with the different counties. When you have a glitch, I'm going to call it a glitch, where you have a discussion on how formula is going to be presented and how the counties are going to pay, and if you don't have an agreement with the three counties, now you have to negotiate. That's as far as I can go with that, because that's exactly what we're doing. We're negotiating, okay? And all I can say is that what we're trying to do is make sure that we protect the citizens of Cumberland County, and that whatever, you know, we put out, if it was necessary, and we're not being taken advantage of at this point in time, I think we're, we're making that very clear to everybody. And we're sitting down and we're talking, and it's been very amicable. We just had a meeting Monday?
Friday.
Friday, I'm sorry, Friday. Just had a meeting Friday, and it was very, it was very friendly, we're discussing it, and again, negotiations are there, notes were taken, that spring brought back, and it looks like, you know, if things work out, that's a hope, but at this point in time, that's what we're doing as far as what comes to the jail with the three counties. Okay, that's it. All right. We can continue.
Resolution 2025-155, resolution authorizing change in custodian of petty cash fund Cumberland County Treasurer Finance officers. Do I have a motion and second?
So moved.
Second.
Commissioner Ostino.
Yes.
Commissioner Albrecht.
Yes.
Commissioner Romero.
Yes.
Commissioner Loes.
Yes.
Commissioner Taylor.
Yes.
Deputy Director Marchand.
Yes.
Director Sorrow.
Yes.
Resolution 2025-156, resolution authorizing and approving additional temporary budget appropriations in the amount of $32,619,853. Do I have a motion and second?
So moved.
Second.
Commissioner Ostino.
Yes.
Commissioner Albrecht.
I'm going to say on this one, I asked the director today, and we're going to get a report two weeks from now, so I'm going to abstain from this until I hear a report, so, at this time, so.
Commissioner Romero.
Yes.
Commissioner Loes.
Yes.
Commissioner Taylor.
Yes.
Deputy Director Marchand.
Yes.
Director Sorrow.
Yes.
Resolution 2025-157, resolution authorizing the award of a non-fair and open contract for providing printing of election materials for the Cumberland County Clerk's Office and Board of Elections. Do I have a motion and second?
So moved.
Second.
Commissioner Ostino.
Yes.
Commissioner Albrecht.
Yes.
Commissioner Romero.
Yes.
Commissioner Loes.
Yes.
Commissioner Taylor.
Yes.
Deputy Director Marchand.
Yes.
Director Sorrow.
Yes.
Resolution 2025-158, resolution, amending resolution 2025-88, appointing member to the Cumberland County Improvement Authority. Do I have a motion and second?
So moved.
Second.
Commissioner Ostino.
No.
Commissioner Albrecht.
This, this was simple, that was a mistake in the number, so we're corrected that, it was asked by the CCA that this was corrected to the proper date, and that's what we're doing right now, so yes.
Commissioner Romero.
Yes.
Commissioner Loes.
Yes.
Commissioner Taylor.
Yes.
Deputy Director Marchand.
Yes.
Director Sorrow.
Yes.
Resolution 2025-159, resolution appointing and reappointing members of the Cultural and Heritage Commission. Do I have a motion and second?
So moved.
Second.
Commissioner Ostino.
Yes.
Commissioner Albrecht.
Yes.
Commissioner Romero.
Yes.
Commissioner Loes.
Yes, and I just like, would like to make a comment, if you don't mind. Karen Burnett has served on this board very actively and successfully for a number of years. I just want to thank her for her service, and I'm happy that she's agreed to stay on another term. And Elizabeth O'Brien is one of our very long-time seasoned educators at Bridgeton High School. I've gotten the chance to work with her for over eight years at Bridgeton High School. She's made a tremendous impact in the community and among our youth in this city and around the county, and I'm so just elated that she has agreed to serve Cumberland County in this way, so thank you, Elizabeth O'Brien, and welcome to the Cumberland County Board of Culture and Heritage.
Commissioner Taylor.
Yes.
Deputy Director Marchand.
Yes.
Director Sorrow.
Yes.
Resolution 2025-160, resolution reappointing members of the board. Do I have a motion and second?
So moved.
Second.
Commissioner Ostino.
Yes.
Commissioner Albrecht.
Yes.
Commissioner Romero.
Yes.
Commissioner Loes.
Yes.
Commissioner Taylor.
Yes.
Deputy Director Marchand.
Yes.
Director Sorrow.
Yes.
Resolution 2025-161, resolution appointing member to the Roman College of South Jersey Board of Trustees, Cumberland Campus. Do I have a motion and second?
So moved.
Second.
Commissioner Ostino.
Yes.
Commissioner Albrecht.
Yes.
Commissioner Romero.
Yes.
Commissioner Loes.
Yes, and also with a comment, I would just like to also welcome Jody McValley to the RCSJ Board of Trustees. Jody is the owner of South Jersey Glass in Vineland, and there's additional five locations in South Jersey. They specialize in glass manufacturing, and with the look that we have of bringing manufacturing back to Cumberland County and offering programs at CC Tech and RCSJ, as well as our workforce development, I think this is a tremendous asset to the Board of Trustees for RCSJ, especially in light of us just receiving a $10 million grant from the state of New Jersey to further manufacturing education here in South Jersey. So welcome Jody McValley to the RCSJ Board of Trustees.
Commissioner Taylor.
Yes.
Deputy Director Marchand.
Yes.
Director Sorrow. Resolution 2025-162, resolution appointing member of the Youth Services Advisory Council. Do I have a motion and second?
So moved.
Second.
Commissioner Ostino.
Yes.
Commissioner Albrecht.
Yes.
Commissioner Romero.
Yes.
Commissioner Loes.
Yes.
Commissioner Taylor.
Yes.
Deputy Director Marchand.
Yes.
Director Sorrow.
Yes.
Resolution 2025-163, resolution appointing a member to the Children's Inter-Agency Coordinating Council. Do I have a motion and second?
So moved.
Second.
Commissioner Ostino.
Yes.
Commissioner Albrecht.
Yes.
Commissioner Romero.
Yes.
Commissioner Loes.
Yes.
Commissioner Taylor.
Yes.
Deputy Director Marchand.
Yes.
Director Sorrow.
Yes.
Resolution 2025-164, resolution appointing member to the Human Services Advisory Council. Do I have a motion and second?
So moved.
Second.
Commissioner Ostino.
Yes.
Commissioner Albrecht.
Yes.
Commissioner Romero.
Yes.
Commissioner Loes.
Yes.
Commissioner Taylor.
Yes.
Deputy Director Marchand.
Yes.
Director Sorrow.
Yes.
Resolution 2025-165, resolution, amending resolution 2025-41, appointing member, Commissioner Anthony Antonio Romero and Commissioner Victoria Loes as members of the Cumberland County Board of Health, amending to include Commissioner Sandy Taylor as an alternate member. Do I have a motion and second?
So moved.
Second.
Commissioner Ostino.
Yes.
Commissioner Albrecht.
Yes.
Commissioner Romero.
Yes.
Commissioner Loes.
Yes.
Commissioner Taylor.
Yes.
Deputy Director Marchand.
Yes.
Director Sorrow.
Yes.
Resolution 2025-166, resolution appointing public agency compliance officer. Do I have a motion and second?
So moved.
Second.
Commissioner Ostino.
Yes.
Commissioner Albrecht.
Yes.
Commissioner Romero.
Yes.
Commissioner Loes.
Yes.
Commissioner Taylor.
Yes.
Deputy Director Marchand.
Yes.
Director Sorrow.
Yes.
Resolution 2025-167, resolution authorizing addendum to lease between Cumberland County Division of Social Services and the Cumberland County Improvement Authority for 64,322 square foot of office space at 275 North Elsie Drive, Vineland. Do I have a motion and second?
So moved.
Second.
Commissioner Ostino.
Yes.
Commissioner Albrecht.
Yes.
Commissioner Romero.
Yes.
Commissioner Lodes.
Yes.
Commissioner Taylor.
Yes.
Deputy Director Marchand.
Yes.
Director Sorrow.
Yes.
Resolution 2025-168, resolution assigning Hesta Tech, Hesta and White to provide legal services to the Cumberland County Construction Board of Appeals. Do I have a motion in second?
So moved.
Second.
Commissioner Ostino.
Yes.
Commissioner Albrecht.
Yes.
Commissioner Romero.
Yes.
Commissioner Lodes.
Yes.
Commissioner Taylor.
Yes.
Deputy Director Marchand.
Yes.
Director Sorrow.
Yes.
Resolution 2025-169, resolution authorizing payment of bills. Do I have a motion in second?
I'll make the motion.
Second.
Commissioner Ostino.
Yes.
Commissioner Albrecht.
Yes.
Commissioner Romero.
Yes.
Commissioner Lodes.
Yes.
Commissioner Taylor.
Yes.
Deputy Director Marchand.
Yes.
Director Sorrow.
Yes.
Director, before we go on, about two, I guess, four, two weeks ago, I asked about the idea of a second public portion to our meeting be added. Are you going to consider that at all, the motion? It's a simple task. Most times, members don't speak. The public doesn't speak the second time. It'll be five, 10 minutes, tops. I asked you to consider that. I guess, are you going to consider that? Because I think it should be added back in. I will make the motion, put it on the floor, and I hope someone would second that, to add that back into the beat and have a vote on. It's just a simple thing. It's a simple act. It's been common practice. There's any board I've been on, that there's usually two times the public's allowed to address, want to say whatever. And I really appreciate it because you have a broad opening request. People can talk about anything, which I really appreciate. For the second part, they have a specific question to ask us, that they would be able to get up and say that to us, while it's on their mind at the time. So I asked you to do that.
Did you make a motion?
I'll make, I'm asking you to consider it first, so I don't have to, but if-
You can make the motion.
I make the motion to put it on the floor. I hope someone would second it, that we add the public portion back into our, into our meeting.
You know, we've been hearing about this for two months. If it takes a second to put it today, to put it to sleep. I mean, this decision is always being done by our director. I want you guys to know about it. With respect, I will second just for the reason that I like to see it put to sleep. I mean, and that goes for everybody. We lose a lot of time talking about the same thing over and over sometimes. So if we put it to sleep, we get the votes, and it goes to sleep, you know? Get it over with. But I have a lot of respect with the director because it's a senior. Did it. Barbara did it. Everybody else has done it since I've been commissioner. So I really don't see a reason for it, but I will second because it needs to be put to sleep.
Do we have a motion in second? Roll call.
Roll call. Commissioner Ostino.
Yes.
Commissioner Albrecht.
Yes.
Commissioner Romero.
Yes.
Commissioner Lodes.
Yes.
Commissioner Taylor.
No.
Commissioner, Deputy Director Marchand.
Yes.
Director Sorrow.
No. Say.
Thank you. Going to consent agenda items for the next meeting. 15821, resolution authorizing the award of a non-fair and open contract for providing software support and maintenance services for the Q's and fourth computerized dispatch system at the Cumberland County 911 Emergency Communications Center and Sheriff's Office. 15822, resolution exercising first option to renew contract for supplying and delivering toner cartridges. OEM only, no substitutes for the County of Cumberland and the Cumberland County Cooperative Contract Purchasing System Identifier #181CC, CCPS, bid #24-06. 15825, resolution awarding contract for specifications for providing and delivering emulsified asphalt for the Cumberland County Public Works Department, bid #25-05. 15833, resolution authorizing the award of a non-fair and open contract for self-right premium system for the prosecutor's office per quote Q440933-1. 15837, resolution authorizing the award of a non-fair and open contract for annual maintenance agreement and software license renewal for the Board of Elections' proprietary software and equipment. 15843, resolution authorizing purchase from New Jersey State contract vendor for a Speed Alert trailer for the County Office of Emergency Management. 15846, resolution authorizing the award of a non-fair and open contract for breakkey licensed Premier Unlimited iOS and Android extractions for proprietary software hardware. 15851, resolution awarding a contract, that'll come on next. 15852, resolution amending resolution 2024-185, exercising first option for a new contract for providing food services and food management services for the Cumberland County Department of Corrections. 15853, resolution amending resolution 2024-767, awarding contract for supplying and delivering office furniture and electronics equipment for the County of Cumberland and the Cumberland County Cooperative Contract Purchasing System Identifier #181CC, CCPS, bid #21-55. 15859, resolution amending resolution 2024-157 and 2024-294 in order to accept a grant extension of the state fiscal year 2024 alternative response to reduce instances of violence and escalation to gather grant program. 15864, resolution authorizing purchase from New Jersey State contract vendor for renewal of required monthly elevator inspection, maintenance, repair, and testing. 15866, resolution approving change order #1 to contract for Omnia Partners National Cooperative Contract Vendor for CCTV equipment and installation for the Cumberland County Department of Corrections. 15867, resolution approving change order #4 to contract for conducting preliminary assessment for Mid-County Clark to construct a 5.2-mile permanent trail system, RFP #23-24. 15879, resolution accepting grant award from the Southern Shore Regional Destination Marketing Organization for Marketing Programming. 15880, resolution designating CFO as approval officer for payment of certain claims between meetings, 48-5-17. 15881, resolution declaring the month of April 2025 as National Alcohol Awareness Month. 15822, resolution authorizing memorandum of understanding between the Cumberland County Salem-Kate May Workforce Development Board and the Cumberland County Regional Board of Education concerning ACE funding for electrical program for schools starting February 2025. 15883, resolution declaring April 2025 as National Child Abuse Prevention Month and inviting the community to attend the Pin Wheels for Prevention Garden Ceremony on April 7, 2025. 15884, resolution supporting the publishing of legal notices on official government website in a clear, transparent, and timely manner. 15885, resolution opposing Atlantic City Electric 17.23% electricity rate increasing, urging Atlantic City Electric to withdraw its application to the New Jersey VPU for an additional 8% increase for the consideration in May and calling on members of the NJVPU to uphold their fiduciary duty as board members.
Excuse me. I just wanted to make a comment about this. I want to thank our deputy director for pushing this. He did a lot of research on this, and we appreciate you making this happen. I'm happy the board has put this one, and I'm happy, not only for this board, but for the public and for the good people of Cumberland County, that this is effective. Thank you.
15886, resolution assigning defense of Cumberland County in the matter of Yvonne Marty et al. versus Cumberland County of Cumberland and PBA 231, docket #CUM-000117-25. 15892, resolution authorizing increase of monetary ceiling for two, for legal expenses in the litigation matter of Brown-Clark et al. versus Charles Warren, U.S. District Court, docket #120-CB-7907. And there are two pending resolutions. Do you want me to read them?
No.
No?
No.
Okay.
Director, do we get an explanation on the et al. This, I thought this basically was done, this number 23, resolution 15892, the additional money for Apollo, Greenberg, and Pandora. Is there an explanation why I thought we were basically through with that?
Sure. Yeah, so it's all complete. You have some outstanding bill. You haven't been billed since last year. And there is a service provider that provided backup litigation support by way of holding a mass of documents that we're getting rid of, but this bill is what I anticipate, which will close it out. We're looking on the whole thing.
Is there a reason why they haven't billed this since last year? Is it because all the stuff they had gathered together?
Yeah, we're all hoping that activity would tail off, and it has. So, we'll continue if it tail off, and we can actually close off.
We did get a very full, I see, with the Board of Health meeting recently, so.
We do have calls for executive session.
Yes. And it's not anticipated with direction.
All right.
Resolution 2025-170, resolution providing for a meeting not open to the public in accordance-
No, wait, wait, wait. That means we'll be coming back, right? So since we already made a motion and we passed it, right, for the second public comment?
Okay.
Please ask, is there-
All right.
We need a motion.
Do I have a motion in second to the second public comment, second public comment?
So.
Second.
New item zone.
Right. Anybody from the public?
On favor?
Oh, wait a minute, go.
On favor?
Aye. Aye.
Thank you. Sandy Aceavito, Upper Deerfield Township. Thank you very much. I just, I did have a quick question. Do we know what time the pinwheel for prevention garden is on the 7?
Actually, it's the afternoon. I'll check and we'll get back to you. We'll know by the next meeting, how's that?
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you so much.